We'll call a meeting to order for Monday, the 17th of October. I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as may be amended.
Some of them.
Is there anything that needs to move up?
The only thing I would, we'll move up, not official, under the manager's report where the event, I have an event permit on here.
Mm-hmm.
That'll come right after the ice rink proposal because it's the same group.
Okay. All right, so we'll just. All right, the agenda is amended, please say aye.
Aye.
We do not have any minutes in hand, so entertain a motion for table till the next meeting.
Yep. No worries.
Okay. Do we have any select board concerns that's not already on the agenda?
No.
No, at this time.
Okay. For those who are zoomed in and those of you that are here, is there anything that's not on the agenda that you would want to bring up? If you're zooming in, please unmute yourself or raise a hand or somehow let us know.
You have five chats.
Already? No, some, I can hear Kurt. Yeah, they were, they were going amongst themselves, huh?
That's all, just letting you know.
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, so the only one open is the town.
Well, you want to make sure.
Well, they come to the top if they do, if they.
No, but they, two people weren't there. Two people weren't there, I'm saying, so just ask them if they want to say anything about citizens input.
Yeah, is there anything else under citizens input for people that might be zooming into the meeting? That's not already on the agenda? Somehow let us know, we're not seeing anything. We're good, okay. Lucretia, do you have any liquor control for us tonight?
I do, so we have one, it's for the Cascade Lodge. So Pia did not renew her license last year. She did not operate the lodge with the rest, or the restaurant at least. So because she, of that, she had to actually, and because they moved to this new online system, she's had to submit, she couldn't just renew it, she had to submit a whole new application, so that's, we, they, she's always, other than last year, they've always had a license, first class and third class.
This is fine for her, okay.
There's no outdoor consumption on this one.
Mm-hmm.
So just, and nothing has changed, so, and the fee hasn't been paid.
I might get two, I was like, oh man, and he said, well, it's all for her. Then I had two copies, I was like. Make a motion for the town clerk to move forward with CL Hospitality Corporation liquor permit.
Okay, all in favor? You got anything else? Actually, Chris can't say anything and I'm good.
I can't say, I just abstain.
Yeah, well, actually, you can speak to it.
Oh, I will.
You just can't vote on it.
I know, I'll always speak, never been shy for words.
Page two, Pia has down, US citizen, question mark?
It says yes.
Mine just has a question mark.
Oh, mine says yes under.
Well, you got, there's two separate packages, two numbers.
First class and third?
Second page.
First class and the third class, there's two, two separate sections.
So I'm just looking at the first class.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, my motion was for, for all of them to go forward with the town clerk.
Okay. If there's nothing else, all in favor of having the town clerk move forward with the CL Hospitality application, please say aye.
Aye, abstain.
Okay.
That's all I have for you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. That way they can hear you on the Zoom.
Okay.
Or if you want to sit up here, I can just turn this. Okay.
So I'm here to talk about an idea for an ice rink. We, I'm actually here to ask for some funding if it's possible. We've, you'll see in the presentation that we've raised some money. Chat, you can change the slide. But before we get there, basically, a really interested and dedicated volunteer for the rec department reached out and wanted, you know, suggested an ice rink and we, starting back in, you can change the slide. Well, either way, even if the slide doesn't change, he reached out and basically, we looked for locations. We've got some ideas about an ice rink. It'll be great for the community, we can offer ice hockey, learn to skate lessons. It would be also for adults as well as children and families. Yeah, sure.
I'm guessing that's not here, but that shows lights, do we have any lights?
Yes, so we actually have floodlights, that was part of our process. We have floodlights that face the basketball court. Rec is going to take some of our program, or some of our facility budget, and we're going to turn them facing into the tennis courts. So our basketball court would be too small, it would be fine, but if you're an adult and once you pick up speed, you'd reach the end. But if we can put it inside the tennis courts and go across the front of the tennis courts, because there are poles in the way where we hang the nets, but if we go across, we can get a 50 by 90, which is basically that size for three-on-three adult ice hockey league, and we would just turn the floodlights in. And we do have to, rec has money in the facility budget to put a timer on it, so it would go off at like 8:00 PM. So you can, so this is an example of what it looks like. You put the rim around and it doesn't damage the ground, and then you put a really heavy layer or sheeting down, and something this size is pricey, it's about $8,200. You can flip to the next slide. You can also, this is actually a video, but don't click on it, but you can do your own rink as well. When you're talking about that size of rink, going with something that's pre-made that we can take apart, if we're going to put money into it, that is made to be taken apart and put back up year after year, it's better to invest in something that's made for that versus just doing a DIY. It also saves us, since we're using volunteers, it benefits us to have something that's kind of clips together and is, is made for that. But anyway, we could also do a DIY option. Go ahead, chat. Oh, no, we don't need to play, can we go to the next? Unless you guys really want to see how to DIY.
I've felt them, so I don't need to see it.
Yeah, okay. So our process was we, we looked at a whole bunch of locations and basically just scored it, but if you look at the, the benefit of the tennis courts is that we can actually, because it's already fenced off when we're doing ice making, or if the conditions aren't great, we can actually close it off. So there's not unnecessary damage, and that's not possible in any of our other locations, and we have lighting. So the timeline, we've already started, started back in August, looked at some locations, verified electricity, I briefed the rec commission and they're on board. We had a public meet, interest meeting on last Tuesday, six people came, 18 people have volunteered to help with ice maintenance. So that's basically, you know, two people, you know, people volunteering to be on call twice a month, which is totally doable.
Can you go back one screen? Okay, I was just looking to see the differences.
With comparisons?
Yeah, comparisons.
What's a place for wood?
So we want to be able to have, like, if people are going to be there regularly, to stack wood in a dry place that we can have natural access to. So like, the golf course, you know, we're not going to stack it down around where the golf carts are because we don't, we wouldn't normally just give people access to that versus if you go to the.
So that's a wood for a fire?
To the pool, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, like a burnbowl?
Yeah, yeah, a little more than a burnbowl, oh, I thought you meant like, what is secure storage?
It could be storing the wood if we did, do it yourself.
Oh, oh, no, we're, it's going to go, going to be stored in the loft of the town garage with all the other rec stuff.
It is?
No, the green wall.
Oh.
That's the other nice thing about that rink is that it's light and trans, like a buying one that's classy.
You don't want to do it yourself, like.
No, we don't want to do it ourselves.
People are going to just wreck that edge with skates and everything.
Yeah, exactly. So anyway, what, what comes next is ordering the rink, setting up water, and just getting the community set up. The rink, we would set up at the end of November and then fill it once there's, it looks like there's going to be three cold days in a row, so first or second week of December is estimated. So here are some costs. We are, I'm putting in that we're going to hire out for plowing because we're already short on our staff, on our highway crew. The lighting upgrade, like I said, I'm not, I'm unsure of how much exactly that will cost, but we just have to add the timer and flip the lights around, but that comes out of my budget already. Water delivery, ice resurfacing and clearing, that's already, Ara is going to spearhead that with volunteers. We're going to program all kinds of things on that, so Griffin's going to take care of that. Insurance, that's already covered, and then.
How many gallons of water?
So it will take, I, I'm unsure of how much it takes to fill, it basically will take a fire truck's worth. So that's, that, we would reach out to our fire department, but for regular resurfacing, it's 300 to 400 gallons, and so I already reached out to Coltons or Pristine Mountain Springs, and they said it's 125 to 150 a time, a delivery. And part of, actually, I've already had someone, well, they've, they've already offered to sponsor three trips for resurfacing, and they do that actually, because we don't have water at the poolhouse. The poolhouse is not winterized, so we have to find another way. So that's one option, if we need to cut that off, I mean, we can, we can work around it.
So.
I didn't realize Colton was called pristine, that's all.
Yeah, 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 now they are, but it's, you know.
Put it out of the beaver dam.
Hacky Barstow Lake.
Yeah, we want to, we want to do a few fire pits and some electricity, but that, we would, we would look around for, for, like cafe lights, we'd, we'd kind of seek donations on that. I actually didn't include that $900 in act, in our actual, like, startup cost because that's nice things to have, and then the rink. So we've already had, Killington Resort has already dedicated $5,000 to this project. We have business sponsor, one business sponsor already for 450. We have, we've started with individual funding, we have $1,000 for that. So we've raised $6,450. We, if, based on the program that I've presented, we would spend about $11,900, and the difference is 550, 500, 500. So now we can cut, cut a few things off of that, but basically, that is what it would cost to get a, a nice ice rink that we can run programs on even when it gets dark at 5 o'clock in the afternoon.
Can you go back to your budget?
Yes.
Where's your firewood?
Oh, yeah, we don't have any, well, I mean, hopefully we get it donated.
I will tell you from experience, you go through a lot of firewood.
Okay.
It gobbles it up.
Do they?
You do not need, you know, you're burning outside, so you don't need.
We don't need good wood, yeah.
Colton wood.
No, we don't, we don't, we could have pine, yeah, we could have pine or.
I got a pile you can have right next to the foundry, okay?
Right, nice, exactly, like.
You should have a donation of like drop-off log.
Yeah, exactly, like, have you, like, cut down something in your backyard and you don't know what to do with it? Like, bring it down, that's a good one, I'll write that down. I'm sure there's some things that are missing. For example, we're going to put out, like, bar mats so that people can skate up, and we have, already have benches, so we'll put our benches out from like the pool, and then they can, should be able to walk over to the entrance. So one thing I already know that's not on this list is bar mats, but again, we're hoping to like, go out for donation to the community, like, anyone have a couple extra of these that we can just put around?
Yep, great.
Yeah, and we will, we will raise a little bit of money with leagues, tournaments, open skate, but we're not relying on that because we really want this to be open and available to community. For certain things like tournaments, et cetera, obviously, you, you charge a little bit, there's some value there, but it's always a low barrier of entry.
What's individual microfunding?
Like, literally asking people who want to skate if they would donate to get this project off the ground. So whether they hand 20 bucks or 500 bucks or whatever.
So now, three-on-three hockey, are you charging the teams for it?
Yeah, so we've talked about.
Is that in there?
No, it's not in there because.
You said they're not depending on the buy-in as part of their budget?
Yeah, I'm just.
Yeah, and another, and this is something I would talk, I would talk to Chet about, is I actually would love to see the money that we raise over the season from leagues, tournaments, open skate to actually go ahead and fund things we do next year.
Right.
So, you know, putting that into some kind of restricted or reserve, I always get those two mixed, but.
Well, depending on how the board decides to, to get involved, that money could go to the rec donation fund, so you can keep that separate.
Yeah.
In the donation side from, from like the capital fund where we would typically pay for these things out of.
Mm-hmm, right, so it would roll over for next year.
The concession stand at the pool seasonal? Does it need to be expanded to do it in the winter?
You don't want.
Give me the new building.
No, so to answer your question, you know how when you go in, it's a.
No, I'm fine with doing it, I just want to make sure it's covered.
No, you're not wanting to open up the concessions there.
No, well, we would do, sell drinks and food at open skate if we, if we wanted to do a, more thinking about a program, like, if we, if we had a big thing and we, and we, like, a special open skate, not just like people show up whenever they want, because we couldn't staff something like that. But if we did a big Saturday event and we said, okay, we're, we're selling s'mores packets and we've got the fires going and s'mores packets are like this amount, you know, something like that.
Okay.
But no, otherwise, like, the animals would want to be in the.
No. I think you should probably look at some pretty good. Let me see, I lost my train of thought, sorry.
Yeah, and the other one, we're going to use, in this location, we have the ping pong room as a warming hut, so to speak, so even if we decide not to have water, et cetera, like, it's still a space that we can have people who, priority access to the warming area possibly where they can have the code to get in, you know.
There's a pile of people trying to get in.
Well, on.
Trying to get in on Zoom. I just got a text, sorry.
No, that's okay. You can close this too.
I think you should think about lighting, those three.
You can clean this off so we know.
90 watt bulbs that you have there.
I just, yeah, I couldn't see them before.
Yeah, no, we did this off.
You might be able to get something LED-wise from like.
So we have two of those, and then we were thinking cafe lighting around the edge, but we could, if we're having an electrician in and the conduit's always already running.
Some LEDs would be real, a lot easier.
Okay.
And much more efficient, and they might even be, they're a lot cheaper too, so.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
We definitely change those out.
Yeah, yeah. Can do.
So my question is going to be, since our last meeting, we were warned that you were leaving us. Okay, so I'd like to hear, you know, this, this is you saying, we, 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 we's going to France.
The royal we.
Yeah.
Well, so.
So I'd like to hear from some of the other people that are pushing for this and, you know, who's behind it?
Yeah.
You know, because you are leaving.
Yeah, absolutely. That's why we had that public interest meeting on the 11th, because we had to, I had to know that there was actually community interest and that one person, very dedicated person, wasn't enough. So those six people, so Ara, John Rudy, Jason Evans, Ken, I forget Ken's last name, and another couple, plus others from the community who I know are, have been dedicated to rec before, like Dan Malali and, and others, have, they will show up, they understand that I'm leaving, we talked about that, and we would divide up the work, and Griffin would be in charge of the programming. But you're right, it is, it is a lot of work. I do feel like, from my standpoint, making sure that we're set up, this is financed, that then, once those things are.
Yeah, why am I waiting?
Are, are purchased, that then the volunteer team, like, people who are interested in ice, they know it's a labor of love, and they're willing to be out there. I don't know if that answers your question.
I think the, the core team of this is, you know, the same, that volunteer all the time for all the kids programs currently.
Yeah, it is.
And they're very passionate about it.
And they're always there.
Well, I see 18 people on, I'm hoping that at least 10 of them are for the hockey rink.
I did not tell them they had to come today, I did let them know that I would come today. But if you would like emails, I can send, email my team of 18 and tell them to.
I knew the one, and I just wanted to hear some of the other names, that's all.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted, you know.
What's the budget look like for?
So can you go back to the, the fee schedule, the cost? I got all the way out of it.
How do you resurface something like that without a tamponi?
Yeah, there's a lot of really creative solutions, so you hire, Coltons will come out and they'll slowly spray the, just spray it, and then you let it sit.
Level it out enough.
It'll just, yeah, it'll fill in the gaps. Or there are systems where you kind of fill up a tank and like walk it around with some PVC piping and a, literally a bath towel, and that'll do it. And then there's some where you actually use like a heated roller, and those are some like really creative DIY options, where you use like a propane tank and you heat it, and then you don't need water at all because you're using, you're heating the water. So TBD on how complicated we get. That's why I like the Colton option is best because it'll just come, spray it down before we involve propane.
Maybe a security warning now.
Um, I, my computer will not connect, or isn't connected to the server here, so it won't let me bring it up, but um.
How much did you have for plowing, 1,800?
Mm-hmm.
You're not going to be using this rink in a heavy down snowstorm. We really don't have time for our guys to go across the street, Chuck.
Clear the snow.
Clear the snow.
Well, I, I think she was just making the assumption, at the end of a storm, being able to plow that parking lot is not out of the question, we just, it would just depend on everything else being done.
Yeah, and that's the difficult part is that they need to be.
And to be honest with you, it makes the most sense to be done with the, with the snow blower.
They, they need to be able to get the snow off ASAP, that mitigates damage, right, as it gets stuck to the ice, and just knowing that the.
Oh, I meant the plowing, you had plowing for the parking lot.
Yeah, but in order to get from the parking lot to the ice, that has to be plowed.
Right, but you hire on a, you hire on a plow company, they're not going to have the blower to do it, correct?
No, we have a snow blower already.
Yeah, so the snow blower we're talking about is the one that's on the front of the.
Snowcat, no, well, unfortunately, the snowcat doesn't fit into the gate, so that's like a, one of those trade-offs, not the snowcat, the.
The bobcat.
The bobcat, yeah, exactly, the snowcat.
The bobcat doesn't.
The tool cat doesn't fit into the, into the tennis court, so the ability to.
Why does it make it to fit?
Well.
It's a chain link fence.
Yeah, and that chain link fence is.
No, cutting it open and putting an opening in is a big project than a chain link fence.
And you don't want that on it, if you wanted the snow plow through, we have a smaller, like, you just get a small snow blower a walk behind.
Well, exactly, we just have, we just have a, a walk behind snow blower, but I like, that was what we talked about.
Just go with a smaller snow blower and.
Thought about it in a different location.
So we, we, a small snow blower will do it, that's what we used.
Can you get out of there?
For some, I cannot, it went frozen on.
Not having any luck.
I think you got to go to your second screen, which is the big TV, close out those dialogue boxes.
What the hell is going on? I gotta, I think I need to stop sharing right now, very quickly.
I didn't want to keep the one up and then start trying to hit the okay, what you had?
Okay, X out of either one, stuck. I haven't had that happen before.
You're in the wrong screen somehow that you have to get back to. Now try.
I want to read all right. You're out of that.
Chuck, do you know if the screen is, like, if you exit the right side or the left side to get to the main TV? Because right now it's set up as two separate screens.
See, I'm not even getting that.
Your mouse doesn't, if you move to either side, it doesn't go up to the.
No, I can't even get to that.
So Roger Rivera, can you hear us? Kurt from the Mountain Times, can you hear?
Yes, I can, I can hear you guys.
Okay.
I still have audio.
Okay.
We're having a technical issue with the computer.
Well, that might be on our end.
Oh, it's totally on our end.
Yes.
Operator error.
Yes, it is, and all I tried to do was reopen it and it just killed me.
What about Ctrl, Delete, and just bring up your task manager?
Close up the power form.
Let me add any of this. Can't even X out of there.
You can hit Enter now. Do it again.
Look at that guy.
Yeah, woo-hoo.
How can we go to the?
Best scene in House Controller, look at that.
Well, it's just, we know it's $1,800 or whatever, so I mean, I'm just getting at that, you know, I mean, I just can't see why if it's a snowstorm that, so we can't at least make one swipe to get there so that the small snow blower can go.
One swipe where?
Through the parking lot, I guess what you're talking about is, is one swipe through, so on a snowy day or whatever, they can get down to the, but wouldn't you leave the, you, you have a shed over at the library now?
Yeah, we could leave the snow blower in the poolhouse by where the.
Just leave it in the poolhouse.
Leave it in the poolhouse, and if you have a snow, it's.
Lock it out.
Down, but then how the down guys.
Yeah, but then where, where are they going to park?
No, that's, so.
Not, not their plow.
There's two different, there's two different things here.
Yeah.
There's $1,800.
That's for parking lot.
That's for the parking lot, and I'm just saying that the town guys should plow the parking lot, that's all.
Okay.
And I'm saying, when, when the, that would be something that we could get Rosie to do when he comes down off of the mountain with the, with the blower and just blow through there.
Yeah, I mean.
With a big blower.
It wouldn't take long, even if we had a great snowy winter, which we go, like, roll back the embankments for an hour with a loader is easy.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's just another parking lot we haven't done in the past and we're just, you know, we can make it work, it's just, it won't be, it won't be a priority item.
Obviously.
Yeah, but that's what I got back in the beginning, if we're getting a foot of snow, you're not ice skating while you're getting a foot of snow because it's going to be nasty out, terrible, you know, you're just not going to do it, so, so just, just take the $1,800 off of the 5,500 needed.
Okay.
Is what I'm saying.
Sure.
Okay, so 5,500, 3,500, so you're down to 3,700 needed. So you're asking the board for $3,700, call it four grand, plus the town plows it, that's what we're asking for.
Yep.
So the next question is, is you can find this in the budget.
Well, I would, I would recommend, given that we're buying an $8,000 rink that we won't have to buy next year, that's a capital item technically, and we, and we buy things like tennis nets and things like that through that, so that's where I would say that would come from.
Right, okay. So I'll just make a motion for the town manager to move forward with the ice hockey rink proposal, with the town taking care of the parking lot and plowing and.
Put a number on it.
And, and that we put $4,000. And, and, and that we put four thousand dollars towards the budget that they provided to us.
Thank you so much.
Well, it's a motion.
Let's see who to clap, who votes against it.
She's reading the room.
I'd second that as well, but it gets great for the community.
We're all asking questions to make it better. I don't think anybody has said anything against it. Are you guys okay?
Conditional, it says stays for another year.
We can't do that.
We could.
Okay, all in favor of Jim's motion to have the town manager move forward with the proposed ice rink, please say aye.
Aye.
So I, I, you already have, can we go to the people that are here? Get off of this ice rink picture?
Escape.
Well, the pictures are, I took it down, so.
Can't get anywhere now.
Oh, I can go anywhere now.
Yeah, let's see.
What do you wanna do?
I wanna get to where the people that are in the meeting.
Oh, you want that back up?
We're done with the rink.
Back to the main screen.
That's all the people that are in there.
We're not seeing it.
We don't see it.
What, you wanna see every person?
Up there! I wanna see the Zoom. I don't wanna, we're done with the rink.
Just know who's, just know who's zoomed in.
I'm looking, I'm seeing it all here, and I'm like.
Yeah, well.
It's not coming up.
Escape.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
So Amy, you're here from the resort, I think, while we're trying to figure this Zoom thing out. I thought I saw Amy.
No.
No?
This is strange. It's up on his computer, but it's not coming up there.
So just disconnected screen.
I'm gonna stop the chair, I'm just gonna start over.
Close PowerPoint.
I think you're still in the PowerPoint.
No, that's the, I didn't set up a second screen.
So my question was, you have, we have to go out and order eighty-nine hundred dollar rink right away, correct?
Yeah.
And the funds that you had to, being donated, how fast are they available?
Um, Amy Laramie said that I would, I would write the, a donation letter, which I've already drafted, and then I'll send it to them. But if this is, the question, I guess the question was, we, if this is a capital expense, then we would order it, since we're tax deductible anyway, and then we would somehow reimburse with.
Well, it's in, it's in the restricted funds, so therefore the reimbursement will go directly back.
The same way we do with like trail funding.
The rink is like nine grand.
It's eighty-two hundred or something.
Eighty-two, was the list, the price she gave up.
No, we would just order that.
Order it, and then as the funds come in.
Come in, it'll go back into that fund to reimburse.
Yeah, and we.
Yeah.
Good.
All right, so. This is terrible.
Okay.
So, you need to order the rink right away, if you wanna get it, so.
Yeah, yeah, tomorrow.
Yeah, so go down the wire and order the rink.
Okay.
And get it from there. Um, did that, does the rink come with the plastic and everything from underneath?
That price, yeah. It's the, like, it's a special bracket, so that they don't damage, you know, because there's some that can be drilled down, or if you're doing grass or whatever, so those.
Okay.
Has everything.
All right, thank you.
Great.
Yeah.
And are you the event permit?
Yes, I'm here, representing Killington Mountain Bike Club. Next weekend, we have the Haunted Hillside Relay Race, which we did last year. And it's just for, at base camp, and it goes around behind base camp, and then there's a few vendors, and some games. And so, however, I've had, I have their certificate of insurance, as required by the event permit, but I have not yet gotten all signatures. I still need to connect with police, highway, and fire.
So they're holding an event on their property that can sit X amount of people, anyway?
Now, why do you need a permit?
So how many people are gonna be there?
Um, I, this year, I think it's be like, they're not gonna be parking on the road.
Just Route Four.
Yeah, well, they have plenty of parking, and if needed overflow at the welcome center, but that's not necessary.
Right.
And the thing is, people come in, they have a, a long period of time to come and race, so people treacle in and out.
Yeah, but they have like school races.
Yeah.
That buses pull in and.
Well.
So this event thing, this is what's getting me. There's certain reasons why there should be a special event, and then there are certain reasons why there shouldn't be a special event. So there's no added police.
Mm-hmm.
There's no bonfire.
No, we're not lighting anything.
No fires for this.
No fires for this. Okay, there's no, it's, there did maybe a hundred cars parked there?
Yeah, yeah, at most.
And they've had?
And that's what I'm wondering.
A hundred cars there on a regular?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Does the event permit cover outside consumption?
But this is, it's their business property, and they're running something? They have an outside consumption permit. They actually can, they don't even have an outside consumption permit. They have a, a permit to sell and drink, and I don't know how, but they can drink on their property. I guess just like the golf course.
You can't, you can't drink on the property. If you're selling to go, can't consume it on the property.
Right. That's why I'm asking, does this permit cover that?
I'm not getting, what I'm saying is, is that we don't have a liquor thing in front of us.
No, no, they're not, we're not doing that. Last year, we did apply for like a catering per, well, not us, but our, but we're not working with the vendor in that way.
Yeah. Okay.
I just don't know why we have a special permit in front of us, that's all. For somebody that's going to do a bicycle race on their bicycle trails, and it's just gonna be for Halloween, that's, and I've been there when they.
I just don't think it needs a permit.
Yeah, I don't either.
I'm not sure that they do.
He's doing business.
So Tom has to revoke his license.
We refuse to sign.
We refuse.
I think last year, we filled one out, and it was signed, so we didn't think that.
We refuse to issue a special event permit.
But we're allowed to do it anyway.
Do it underneath their own licenses, so it doesn't, if anything goes wrong, it doesn't come back to.
Awesome, I feel good about that.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you. Zoning amendments for Sections 120, 407, and 640.
So this is the second part of the permit, I mean, the amendments that were provided by the planning commission. All the original copies are here. And this related just to Sections 120, definitions, 407, short-term rentals, and 640, certificate of occupancy. Based on the, the discussion related to short-term rentals, there was no changes coming specifically to the short-term rental, other than we are intending to move to an ordinance, and this is just putting language in there that allows us to replace Section 407 with an ordinance in the future.
So for those of the people that are in here, Section 120, what definitions are being? What page is on here is for definitions? What's being changed?
For, there's been change, there's been multiple changes done in these ones, so I'm not a hundred percent sure which ones are part of this.
Is there anybody here from the planning commission that can do this for us?
Don't.
Well.
No.
No, I don't recognize anyone.
These are away this week.
So if I go to page 10, I guess this is one of them, travel trailer, a mobile vehicle or a camper van. So I guess we kind of.
Those are different sections.
Just clarification definitions is my understanding.
And then zoning map, they've changed certain things there. Locations and boundaries of zoning districts are established according to the zoning map. There's a bunch of stuff crossed out, and then these, so didn't we do this already this one time here? This, this definitions, or were there more definitions?
There were more, there's been definitions in each group that related to each grouping, but I think ultimately, it's, it's the culmination of all of them.
So this is just a working document?
Yes.
Now, this is something we're gonna be passing, and we're supposed to pass, yes or no.
Because then, what you can do is then you look, then you have to look at all the changes that were made as part of each one of these groupings, because this is the third set, and then apply, and then you're approving the entire package. But these are all acting ordinances.
Are we allowed to table this until we have somebody from the, from the cell?
Well, we got, we have some people here for short-term rental, I'm sure. Can we at least go to the short-term rental section and tell me where that is? What page?
Parking and dimensions.
I don't see them, they didn't put this out on their website. What's that?
I don't see it on the, the site, on their section, so I can grab it. The revise, the revisions.
Can I see this one? Can we just have one over here?
That's just lighting and signage.
So this is parking and dimensionals.
Right, and that's lighting and signage.
What's this one? Public hearing copy.
Short-term rentals, Section 407, page 52.
Let's see if it's in this, even though it's labeled differently.
No changes made on this at all.
What page you on, Jim?
Uh, page 52.
Okay, let's see if it's in this one.
That's what this says, but it's not there. So, right, if I go to table of contents?
There is no 402 in here. It jumps from Section 401.
407.
Oh, 402, prohibited uses.
404, 406.
Oh, 402, 407, short-term rentals, pit, short-term rental of dwelling unit, page 53?
Right here.
Short-term rental of dwelling unit, page 53.
407.
Section 407. My eyes are going.
Doesn't look like anything's changed.
It doesn't show me what is changed.
What the changes are.
I mean, it's just. I mean, the issue is, is that, just.
I'm not seeing changes to what we had.
No, that's where I'm at. So we're supposed to have something up. This one just says parking, so there was nothing done here. There's another one that's just for short-term rentals, because short-term rentals was done after parking and dimensionals, and it was done, this one's dated July 25th. Short-term rentals was just at the planning commission.
In September.
In September. So we don't have anything in front of us here. That one says.
This one's just.
This is, the most common here is 2020.
No, no, no. What does it say in here?
Lighting and signage.
Lighting and signage. So you have lighting and signage, and you brought parking and dimensional, but there is no short-term rentals.
And there's nothing on the website that I can find, and I was not sent anything. It was, the warning came out the day after the planning commission meeting, and then the documents were not updated to me, and I thought everybody had them.
So I'm just gonna give a quick, let's go back to the people that are on here, and how many people are here for short-term rentals. So, I mean, I see Holly's on here. I don't know who else is, and Dan, and I don't know who else is involved in the short-term rental, but since we don't have what's supposed to be in front of us, yeah, we're gonna have to table this to the, to the next meeting.
Which is next Monday.
Next Monday, and if we can get the short-term rental document to us. But for those that are sitting here, currently, I know some of the conversations that have been had was a confusion about losing the plus two or whatever. That is not in here. That's not being changed. The only thing that's supposed to be in the short-term rental change is saying that this document is staying the same until there is an ordinance that is in place by this board, and if not contested by the voters, to go to a vote. So when it's finally accepted by all, that's, the ordinance is gonna be where the changes are.
Right.
And in the ordinance, it's gonna be more of the fining and, and the enforcement. It's not gonna change anything as far as two per bedroom, plus two.
Plus two.
Okay.
And the registration portion.
It's the registration part and everything. I think it's going to go into, because per the Division of Fire Safety, saying that all units will have to be inspected. It's not this eight and over, okay? And that it will be more that this board will be the judicial bureau, that when the zoning administrator or the short-term rental person administrator writes a ticket for over advertising, okay, that it will be held here, the ticket will be right away, will not be a warning. It was, you, you, you wrote what you signed on for.
The ordinance also has to include the procedure.
And the procedure, and we'll, and we'll have the procedure and everything. So, I mean, the ordinance is also, or, or, you know, you're only getting two people, the, the actual zoning thing says two, two extra people per dwelling.
Right.
Not a duplex. You don't get four, because a duplex is considered one dwelling, because you're only allowed to have one dwelling really on your property, okay? I know there's one that a friend of mine used to own, that it was permitted, that has two lots on there, but still, we're saying that it's two per bedroom plus two for your septic system. That's what it is. Some people were taking it as two per bedroom plus two on each side, and that's not what the intent of the rule was. It was two per bedroom plus two, because that's what we can do over the septic law.
But they didn't send it to us to accept it to begin with.
Right, so.
Jim, I got a question on that. Is it two per bedroom per dwelling, or the two, so if you have that duplex, could you, like, my house, for example, which we don't do short-term rentals, but it's a perfect example of what you're saying. On one side, that's a rental house, there's four bedrooms. So that would be, you know.
Eight plus two is equal to ten.
Ten.
Would that, but then on the other side, there's three bedrooms. So.
So you have seven bedrooms total.
Yeah.
So it's fourteen plus two is sixteen.
But would the whole house get inspected, or just the rented outside?
Just the, just, just the part, so we actually have people this year, because it's set up in the system, that are coming in, and they're registering A and B.
Right.
Okay, or some are staying in A, and they're only coming in for B.
And then, so in that case, if I say I'm living in A, renting out B, could I say that B can house fourteen then?
No, because you only have four bedrooms over there.
But I thought we're counting the dwelling?
No.
If you wanna put a lot of those people in.
If you're a duplex, you're two separate units. If you're a duplex, you're two separate units. One is four bedrooms and one is three bedrooms.
Okay, so the bedroom is by unit, even though you're saying the house is the dwelling?
Right, you can't say you have a seven, you, you wanna rent it to fourteen people on the four-bedroom, then nobody's living in the three-bedroom one. That's an automatic.
Right.
You know, you're getting two per people per bedroom. If you have a duplex, your duplex doesn't say, your duplex says this is a four-bedroom and this is a three-bedroom. So you're getting eight, you're getting eight plus six, and you have to decide if you're renting both units, are you putting the two to this one, or you're putting one to this one, one to this one?
Okay, so that's the plus two goes to?
The septic system.
Yeah, okay, cool.
You know, that's it.
What's your chat, chat?
Yes, it will, Jonathan. In, we have, so the, so the ordinance.
In elegantly?
I don't know what that means.
No, the, any, the ordinance will have to be posted. There will be a public hearing with the select board, and, and then there will be a decision as to whether to adopt it or not. Right now, the current regulations stay in effect until such time that that were to go into place.
Correct.
Changes need to be posted so they can all see them.
Yeah, all zoning changes will be warned, like thirty days in advance, and it'll be sent out via chimp and everything else.
Okay. There is no ordinance right now in place.
Right.
What we were waiting for is for this zoning change.
Right.
From the planning commission to take place. Cause that would be putting the cart before the horse of getting an ordinance when you don't have the zoning changed. The zoning has to say that this zoning will go away into an ordinance when it's passed. So, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
There's another chat, I don't know if it's still the same.
It's not gonna happen by the next Monday meeting.
No, I mean, there, folks, the ordinance is probably gonna happen, and I kinda picture this, is that we're already into this year with the zoning regulations. The, the year starts November 1. So, here we are, we're not gonna have this ordinance, this zoning change until probably next month. We're not gonna have it next week.
Right, and then you, and then we have to go through the process of completing the ordinance, having the hearing, making any adjustments and adopting.
We have to get through this.
Right.
And then we gotta wait thirty days for somebody not to challenge this.
Right.
So, I don't think we're gonna have any ordinance in place that can actually, I don't think it's fair to the short-term rental people of having them registering under one set of rules that they're doing right now.
And then change it and go back.
And then changing it in the middle, and that, that's not fair.
No.
So.
If we adopt it, it'll be for the next year.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's it, so it won't be for the Monday meeting. The Monday meeting is just, hopefully, they're gonna send us this.
You're not gonna get that.
For current.
I mean, I've even, I mean, if you're telling me that the zoning regulations for, um, short-term rental has not been posted at town hall.
This is what I took off of the desk in there.
If it's not posted on the town hall, they have to be posted for extra amount, I mean, I'm surprised we don't have, like, um, five hundred and sixty short-term rental people on, on, on this Zoom call saying, there's nothing on, there's nothing on the website either.
I could, I couldn't find it, so I'll have to, I, yeah.
Well, we have some gaps right now, so.
The reality is, is we may have to re-warn this meeting for thirty days and then start that process again, so we'll, we gotta find out where the red lines are.
So those of you that are here for the short-term rental thing, do you have any questions, or am I making myself clear that the planning commission didn't get us the actual document in front of us for short-term rental zoning? Um, I can't do anything in an ordinance with the town attorney as the zoning administrator or short-term rental person, and I don't think it's fair that we change the rules since now you're signing up. And, and, and I don't really, the only rules would be is the violations of an ordinance, but, um, I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Kind of. And this piece of paper doesn't speak to any changes. It just says a clarification.
This was the public hearing warning I was given the day after.
No, I'm just saying it says to clarify the requirements. The requirements aren't changing. And, um, the modification of relevant terminology within the glossary. It's not changing any of the requirements or any of the things that they would be most interested in.
This was taken from the planning commission and then it made it to a select board.
Is there another chat in there? Is that the same one?
Thank you, that's why I was here to say it would be unfair to change midstream.
Yep.
At least somebody thinks like me. There has to be changes, otherwise this meeting wouldn't be want.
So then, uh, we need to table these amendments until we get the paperwork in front of us.
Looking the wrong documents, so. Okay.
Okay, so the zoning amendments will be tabled until such time that we have the correct documents in front of us to act upon.
Well, I would just refuse, I mean, you're gonna have to, you, I'm gonna just say that the, that we do not have the proper warning in front of us. I don't know if the proper anything, so this is rescinded tonight's meeting, and let them go through the process of wanting it again.
Well, that's why we're not just postponing, we're tabling until we get the stuff.
No, because you can't table, because, because the document wasn't posted.
Oh, it wasn't posted, okay.
The hearing, this hearing could not take place.
Hearing couldn't take place, cause it wasn't posted.
This hearing for section.
Okay.
120, 407, and 640 is, is, is turned back to the planning commission to do it correctly.
Okay. Okay. Um, you have golf financials listed first.
Yeah, God, well, yeah, David was unavailable due to appointments to come to tonight's meeting. Um, right now, this is just golf from July 1 through the end of September. Revenue-wise, they're about fifty thousand dollars ahead of last year, and the budget is for about a hundred and forty thousand, so we're basically on budget when you look at the twelve-month, um, process, and we'll see how, how October looks, cause they are closed.
They're closed now.
Today, right, yeah, or the other day.
Sunday was their last open day. Today was nine holes for all the employees. But it was not open to the public today. And they, just to pass this on, the, they, I told David I would bring this up. They would prefer people don't show up with their dogs during October, because they're putting the course to sleep, meaning the aerators are coming in now. They're doing stuff on all the fairways and cutting down a lot of the tall weeds, and they just don't want people with their, with their dogs and stuff in there right now.
Can we post a sign up that says dog is not allowed until November?
Uh, we could.
December 1?
Well, he said they'll be ready by November. He's only figuring on the next couple of weeks.
Um, and on the expense side, they're running pretty much on budget the same way. Um, we're within two thousand dollars difference from last year's net at the same time. From a cash perspective, at the end of September, golf had six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in the pro shop and seventy thousand in the restaurant, of which a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is restricted funds. So when you take that out, we're at five thirty, we're basically at six hundred thousand dollars cash at the end of the season, and the town did not take out any loans, uh, to fund operations this year. You know, some of that cash additional flow is related to expenses not incurred, because a couple of things of equipment haven't come in yet, but overall, still performing pretty well.
Okay, I have a question here. Uh, under, under the treasurer's report, at the bottom, Sherbin Golf Service Company, it says transfer from pro shop is zero, but then below it, it says transfer back to pro shop is fifty thousand dollars. If they didn't borrow any money, why are they giving money back?
Typically, what has happened in past years.
I'm just not familiar with that. Mark probably knows the answer.
In, go ahead.
If cash, as the restaurant has much less bills to pay, uh, for example, payroll is paid out, all payroll is paid out of the pro shop. So restaurant will accumulate cash. When we made some bond payments a couple of months ago, um, I asked Macretia to transfer some money over, so they, they did, they did transfer fifty grand. They had excess cash on hand, and I wanted to use it for the bond payments.
So, but, but I guess what Steve is asking here is underneath Sherbin Golf Company, it's saying that the transfer from the pro shop is zero. So from the pro shop to the.
Yeah, I don't.
From the pro shop.
To the restaurant.
To the restaurant would make, okay, so the pro shop to the restaurant would be zero.
See up above, it says transfer from restaurant, fifty K.
So, yeah, okay, so just, it's, it really should be like, transfer from.
Restaurant.
Restaurant to pro shop. It doesn't say.
Yeah, it kinda does.
It does on top. It does on top.
The pro shop, the pro shop transferred from restaurant, fifty K.
Yeah, okay.
In the, in the Sherbin Golf Service, which is your restaurant.
I have a question on menswear. So on, on merchandise, on page one. You've got shoes, menswear, ladies wear, all this other stuff. We budgeted, our actual for this year, period three is forty-one, one, and last year is forty-three, nine, so twenty-eight hundred dollars less. Then I go to the last page, and it's on our expenses, and for total pro shop, whatever, it's, it's not making, okay, I'm already answering my question here, because underneath this here, it has card credit fees in it, so it's not apples to apples. Because I was gonna say, well, even still, it says actual in two thousand twenty-two or whatever, was a hundred and seven thousand for pro shop, the top line, and now we're a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So we're thirty-one thousand dollars over last year, but yet we did two thousand dollars less. And then I looked, there's credit card fees of twelve grand, so that puts me down to about twenty-four thousand, and there's bank charges of two hundred and sixty-seven, but everything else, headwear, miscellaneous and everything else, I mean, we spent like twenty thousand dollars more and we did two thousand dollars less.
I, I, I guess I'd have to look at it, Jim, then. I, I don't have it. I'm looking at a much different golf, I, I can't get into the commercial.
So on page one.
These are your expenses, okay.
No, go to page one, and merchandise, shoes, menswear, lady wear, pro balls, gloves, golf clubs, miscellaneous, headwear, headwear. In two thousand twenty-two, our actual was forty-three, nine, and in twenty-three, we're at forty-one, one eighty-five.
Okay, couple thousand bucks less.
Right, now I go, now I go to page, the last page underneath expenses, and I've got menswear, ladies wear, pro balls, gloves, golf course, I mean, clubs, miscellaneous merchandise, headwear. Then I have credit cards and bank charges in this category on expenses for, let's call it twenty thousand, okay? So twenty thousand off the one thirty-eight is one eighteen, but the year before, I spent one oh seven.
You even, see they have it all lobbed here, cost of goods here.
The one thirty-eight you're looking at, which is year-to-date, total pro shop, that's not merchandise. It's, it's not subtotaling for you, or merchandise.
It's, it's all this stuff here, too, all the expenses.
It's golf course management. It's.
Okay, I thought the last time we asked for having the different things broken out, that I, I, I asked for. Cause I mean, here I got, I said, I would like to see like. Okay, so pert for merchandise.
So we had a budget here of cost of goods, but what happened is they broke it out after that, and so that it comes into each one of them, but there's no subcategory, so you don't know that that is equal to what the cost of goods here, cause there's no total.
Cost of goods is fifty-four, but that was for two thousand twenty-two, but there's nothing for.
Okay, so.
They broke them out individually, aps.
Twenty-three forward. I wasn't here, I wasn't here then. They just put a, fifty-four K.
But, but this is where I got, like, the last time, it's like, so, one year, so if I go to the second to the last page, one year I got, in twenty-two, pro shop expense thirteen thousand two fifty, then go down to uniforms, I had nothing budgeted, then all of a sudden, there's budgeted two thousand in twenty-three. You know, it's just like, there's so many different lines that aren't.
Understood, cause the format has changed. If you, for example.
And this is not on you, this is on them.
It's just an explanation of what you're, of what you're looking at. The admin expense, FY twenty-two budget, a hundred and ten thousand, so they took a slew of expenses, rolled them all into one number, and slapped it in there. But FY twenty-three budget, I took it all and busted it out into individual categories based on the, on the pro shop history. So I took that big number going forward in the next budget year, and if you added them all up, you, you, there's no subtotals for you, Jim, unfortunately. So you'd have, I, I don't even have a calculator with me, or I'd give you an addem up, but.
I'm just doing it right now. I already did it. So totals up, the budget of the wearables is fifty-three thousand that they budgeted to do. The actual.
All I'm getting at is, is that when we hired on this company, which I pushed for, they were gonna give us individual line items, and they're still not, they're not doing it. You're doing it.
Totally not.
And that's what I'm getting at, is this, they, remember when they came to us and they said, I can tell you what you're spending for pro balls, and what we're selling them for. I can tell you what we're gonna do for gloves, and they're not doing it. I'm just getting tired of, I mean, it's like, you can't, you don't, you don't know what it is, Mark, or I don't know what it is, because they're not giving the correct budget, and here we are coming into another budget time, and it's like, we're right back to, Mark is doing everything, and.
You can, you have to go all the way back, cause you can say, okay, balls, we, we did fifteen, nine forty-two, and, but our balls cost us.
Right.
On the last pa, on the last page here, our balls cost us eleven, one forty-six. So you have to keep going back and forth with it to peel it apart. It would be nice to have it subtotaled for us, so you could see what the cost of goods are in the clubhouse, okay, or the pro shop, and then you can see what it is in terms of the revenue coming in. Then you can figure if you're making money or not.
Mark, are you, can you see that in their system when you're in there?
I can give you a summarization right now. Year-to-date, nine, September thirtieth, pro shop merchandise sold. On a year-to-date budget of fifty-one thousand, we, we sold forty-one thousand. We're down ten thousand in cost, in sales. Cost of goods, total, we were budgeted thirty-five, seven. Our actual is twenty-one, twenty-five, eight sixty-five, so we're down ninety-eight hundred. It's the same ten thousand.
Making money.
Yeah. I, I guess what I'm worried about is, is that, you know, you're, the budget line here, is this you doing all these things, breaking out, or is this them now? Because in the previous year.
Oh, it's definitely me. They, they.
And that's all I'm getting. This is my major concern right here. See this, this was twenty-two, and then they would put, and then they would put in restaurant, eleven thousand, but then they didn't do anything. And now, well, then now all of a sudden, Mark is coming in on this one here and breaking out, and it's just like there's too many blanks.
But what they did is they took restaurant down here.
No, no, this is Mark over here in this.
Oh, I know it is, but if you, they plugged in eleven, six on the restaurant, okay, for income, then what they did is that when they got down here, they put in the actual expense, oh, no, no, they had a full expense on the restaurant here, then they broke out the expenses here this year. They never broke them out here. That's why you're seeing it over here. They never did.
And these are, these are our books, and what they're doing is, is when they.
And these are, these are our books, and what they're doing is, is when they, when they have the expenses, they're coding the, the expenses, and we're putting them in our system. We're not seeing their system.
I don't know what you mean by that.
They don't have their system. The expenses are all paid through the town.
Correct.
They, they don't, they have payroll, and they send us a bill for it.
No, I'm, I'm more pointing towards the fact that when they use this computer system or whatever at the golf course, if they sell a beer, or they sell food, and it's eleven dollars, they just hit one button. And they're not separating it out also.
I have cleared that up with them. I told them they had some issues. I worked through every single one of them, so that now, when they push a beer button, it goes to beer revenue. When they push a food button, it goes to food revenue. If it's on the, on the beverage cart, if they hit beer, it goes beer, beverage cart. And, and so on. It's not rocket science. It's, it is, it is proper, now it's properly interfacing from their Club Caddy point-of-sale system into an Excel file, basically, which I enter into our NIMRIC. Okay, so that, that's been, there was some minor issues there, Jim. I, I mentioned it to you in the past. It's been corrected.
Okay.
So...
Cool.
But they, they have their own chart of accounts, and I try to take, so they fill out their budget table with their chart of accounts. And then I try to, I, I mirror that to NIMRIC. And if, if they don't, if they don't break everything out, even they give you, cost of goods sold, pro shop, one number. That's wrong. It should, and your, and your pro shop sales in one number. No. We sell line, lines of goods, and it should be budgeted that way.
And that's the way they...
FY twenty-three, I did a ma, I backed into it mathematically, based on our history.
So you backed into it?
I did, yeah.
So...
Cause it's the right way to do it.
How, in the last two months, how much of your time do you think is still being spent on the golf course?
It, it, it will slack off. I'm forcing it to slack off because we're into budget season with the town.
No, I, the last two months prior, say, July and August.
Yeah, I...
Are you still doing fifty percent of your time into...
Give or take, sure, yeah.
So what do you wanna do with this? Make a motion to accept the comparative report, it's September two thousand twenty-two?
Is the, uh, so you have a year-to-date, what's your year-to-date profit number? Golf, golf surplus?
The net says three forty-six, two two three. Last page, last line.
Jeff, you didn't, did you give me that one?
That was the one where I gave you first.
Okay.
So revenue is up.
Golf comparative.
Fifty.
Town, town. Thank you.
Yeah, it's last page.
So this is...
A second motion.
Please give me a moment. I think this report is missing something. Three four six, two two three, four three three plus. One one, four, one seven eight, point five one, four six oh, four oh one. Okay, so what this report is not reflecting, um, the town in September uh, made payments to the golf course, so that in turn, the golf course could make their debt payments. Okay? Hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. It's not included in the, in the three four six.
Correct. And, and the reason we were doing it, this is the five, the, the, the sixes and the sevens, just to talk about golf course performance? It's not the total.
Okay.
It was keeping, it was keeping debt payments out of this, so we weren't confusing those issues with what the golf course is doing.
Okay.
Operationally. That's how it has been done historically.
But you're showing the thirty-six thousand in interest. It's one of the last line items in the report.
Correct.
So...
There was a thirty-six thousand dollar, thirty-six thousand three hundred and three dollars fifty-one cents of one point one eight three million. So that's an actual expense, is the reason. So that's not from...
I understand, but thirty-six thousand of the one fourteen...
Is that?
Is that.
Okay.
So you just wanna be careful.
Okay. The goal, the goal ultimate, well, yeah, the goal was ultimately just to, for the purposes of talk about golf course performance, was keeping all of the debt service out of it.
I understand.
So that's, so that's what we wanted to do.
So to your three four six, add back the thirty-six.
Okay.
And, you know...
So the thirty-six gets added to the three forty-six without the, the debt service?
Well, it's only getting added because last year, they did make that payments. This, next year, it will be apples to apples.
Correct.
Yep.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Long favor of accepting the golf report. Please say aye.
Motion to accept the golf course treasures report.
Second.
Is there anything other than what we already talked about in this?
Nope.
We already brought up the back and forth from the pro shop. Uh, all favor of accepting the golf course portion of the treasures report, please say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, on the town side, um, we're performing as we should be on the revenue side, if related to tax collections. We're about the same amount off, and we'll talk about that more in a minute. But all other items from a revenue perspective, option tax is up about twenty thousand. But we are tracking about standard with the, the process so far. On the expense side, just looking at totals, cause we're still pretty early in. We have made one payment that was not reflected when you look at last year's, the, on the revenue side. The expense came out of the, the state education tax, that eight hundred and thirty-two thousand has to be transferred over. We've already made the one payment to the Woodstock uh, schools, and that was not reflected in last year's. So we're, we're tracking where we should be tracking, and our expenses are running about the same overall. And if, you know, if Mark has anything to add, I, you know, if we're, he's just back, and we're gonna be working through the budget issues here shortly. Cash-wise, um, if you look at the treasures report, I don't remember where I put it. Um, we are, right now, seven point five million dollars in the bank. We have three million in restricted funds, five point seven, owed to the state of Vermont, but that's on December first. Uh, we still have another five hundred thousand dollars, or five million dollars that will be collected in, um...
November.
November, uh, which is also prior to that payment. And about half of that, the two and a half million would be applied technically to this school tax item, so we're still in about the, the positive position we should be during the year. We're positive, probably about a million and a half at this point. So we're tracking where we should be. Um, we're still looking for a better way to eventually report how we're, how much of it is state revenue we've gotten versus, versus how much of it is actual municipal tax. So we always have a slightly, well, significantly overinflated revenue side on the municipal tax side as compared to expenses. So, um, we always have a big number until we get to some of the, the payments to the state. But overall, we're performing as we, we would expect to be performing, and I don't see any major issues at this time. And if you have any questions, I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward.
This doesn't have to do with the numbers, but is E nine one one, does that mean emergency nine one one?
Yeah, your nine one one, little green signs at Orchard House. People can order new ones and we...
The E is for emergency?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I didn't know if, cause we're waiting for an electric sign here. Okay.
No, we are. We are, but that's, it's in the process, so...
But it's more than a hundred bucks.
Yeah, I know that. No, I didn't know if for some reason, there was an electric nine one one on municipal buildings.
No.
Okay. So we signed a bunch of warrants, whatever, last Friday or whatever, and then, so when I get this here, but when I signed the warrants, there was, it's just gonna come back to the telephone or the internet bill again. But if I go to the recreation on this thing here for expenses, there's, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing in here. I mean, there, there's one number for utilities, but when I signed a warrant or something, it was like a hundred and eighty-four dollars for the month for internet at the swimming pool?
And, and phone?
You think that's okay?
No, I don't.
A hundred and eighty-four dollars for one phone and internet?
No.
Is that separate from the town hall?
Yes.
It's its own, because it has its own number and its own setup.
And we don't have any way to do the other here.
I guess it's like, I mean...
Like voice over?
Cause we paid VTAL a hundred and eighty-four dollars for, but I thought we were switching everything over to...
That's the one that we don't have the ability to do voice over IP at this time. We're trying to figure out how we're gonna do that.
But a hundred and eighty-four dollars a month?
And I did not see this.
I pay eighty-one dollars for internet and phone.
Okay.
But where else do we have VTAL?
Well, in the, in the fire panels, still. Trying to get those out.
Make a motion to accept the treasures report and the town report.
Okay.
Second.
Long favor.
I put a, just a draft of the overall expense budget. That is just, it's the summary as to where we stand right now. The budget this year, right now, is about a hundred and fifty thousand more than last year. There are still some things to be modified and changed. We're in the process of, of reviewing it and making any adjustments. The three sections that are highlighted are basically numbers we know are going to change. We don't have the final numbers for them, whether it's benefits, appropriations, and insurance. So we're, we will be verifying those as well. And then there also will be presentations starting next Monday from different departments related to their, their budgets. So this is just a first draft of an overall, and then we will be drilling down on each of these items. Starting twenty-fourth?
On the twenty-fourth.
So today's the seventh, or next week is the seventeenth, or?
Today's the seventeenth.
Today, we have preliminary operations budget for discussion, and preliminary capital budget needs assessment.
Well, I have the capital budget numbers in there. I didn't talk about any of the specific projects yet. We'll, we can go over that next week with the special projects, is that, and we, also, I moved up the recreation budget to the twenty-fourth from the original, so that Sarah will be able to make that presentation next week before she leaves.
So we think we're gonna come in here next week and do...
I don't see us doing all that in one week.
Preliminary operations budget for discussion and capital budget needs, and then select board, I mean, I thought we broke up those... I mean, I thought October twenty-fourth is pushing it, but now we're gonna combine the seventeenth tonight and the twenty-fourth together.
Well, we, the capital, the, the capital budget needs, I would probably move to the November fourteenth meeting, cause most of the other, the ones next week are very small, very quick reviews.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't think it's fair to these other people to come in and then sit in here for...
Alright, we'll do capital on the fourteenth. So we'll move that one down.
Where are we at? We've gone through the golf, and we've gone through the town finances, or the management report?
Well, that's where we started with the budget, just now.
The budget update thing.
On the root four sewer allocation, um... We have a request to basically realign one sewer unit for Gore Investments from the Anthony Way parcel, twenty-one oh oh three, to the parcel, parcel twenty-two, one fifty-seven A, which is the Killington Road, four oh five, to align with the change made with the Alpine Pipeline, based on usage and need. For the, the apartment that's over there, they're gonna need two ERUs according to Alpine Pipeline. So there's been a request for the town to reallocate that one ERU.
Where is this?
There's a, the parcel on the, the bend right there on Anthony Way, that goes in there.
It's the old, um...
Wise Building.
Wise Building.
That's where it's going to.
Okay. Oh, they wanna move it across the street?
They wanna move it from Anthony Way over to Instone.
So basically, we don't really, as long as, the way that these things got in trouble before was that it wasn't being done through Frank Heald. If Frank Heald signs off, then we sign off.
We, we sign off, but there is, we formally have to say, we agree and we allow it to move, so...
Has Frank Heald signed off?
Correct.
No?
Yes, he has.
Okay.
Yeah, no, he's made the change.
Do we have that letter for him, or?
I believe I do somewhere here.
Cause this is just a procedure. This is nothing. It's just, it shows that we have a letter for Frank Heald, and then... The other ones that say that we can't do anything without their blessing. That's the way the contracts are written up. Prior people, not you guys, but prior people, we're just moving them all over the place.
Where's that one, Frank?
I still think it's really unnecessary to have two ERUs at the office where, I know it's, it's a showroom that has a, a bathroom for my employees. Nobody's there, basically, just to stop by and use the bathroom.
I know, I talked to Frank, and he, we had made that arrangement, cause we match now, so...
You have a letter, that's right.
So, uh, then I'll have to get you the, the actual letter, cause I couldn't, I don't have it here handy, from Frank.
So instead of buying ERUs, I decided since I own them across the street, I'm moving them back to the...
Frank sent you a letter, correct?
Yeah, we signed it all, uh...
Well, you need the, the select board's asking for a copy of that letter.
I'll make a motion to move for, for the town manager to move forward without allocating the one ERU from one property to Gore upon presentation of the letter from... As soon as we see the letter.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. So I can sign off on it when I have the letter in hand, or do you wanna say that?
Just, just send us the letter.
Okay, we'll do that.
We don't have to have a discussion. You just send us the, all three of us, saying, here's the letter, I'm signing off.
Right, okay.
You can do that tomorrow morning.
Yep. Sounds good.
And this allocation will take care of the, um, what I'm missing at the four oh five, the certificate of occupancy, right? So that will take care of it, or?
No, that doesn't, this is just part of it.
It's just part of it, okay.
Yeah, this is part of it.
Does that leave it out?
Cause you're in site plan, and we're meeting again, and gonna go into deliberative session.
I would hope Thursday.
That's a Jim question.
What's that?
Does this major with enough ERUs in the property that you're taking one of?
It's just vacant land. I'm paying, I'm paying...
He doesn't need it for...
I have them, but I don't use them, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing over there.
Okay.
This will, this will give him another check mark, cause he's in site plan review for the change of use of the building from Wise Realty to a retail shop in a one-bedroom on the backside.
What's the lot number on Anthony Way? Do you have it here somewhere?
I have the block at the, in the email.
I mean, I don't need it right now.
So if you just get that letter, then send it to us tomorrow, and then just sign off on it. on it.
So, they have the one ERU or whatever.
It is.
And then the zoning, the zoning...
Parcel twenty-one oh oh three.
The zoning, the zoning board is meeting up for a deliberative session to finish off hopefully for this property and for one other property, the Bearforce One on Route Four. So...
Cool. So, do you have an appointment?
Yeah, the, the Transportation Alternatives Grant that we're doing, that's on Long Route one hundred from the, the Welcome Center up to the Trails, was originally gonna be complete, was gonna be managed by in-house Planning Commissioner, and we are reallocating it because he has left. We're going to be putting it back where we originally approved it for the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and Stephanie Bork to be the representative for this, and just need a motion authorizing her to...
So, moves Stephanie Bork to be appointed as the MDM for the TA grant.
Okay. On your favor there?
Aye. And one last little note is the two cruisers are here, they came last Thursday.
Did we order the third one?
The third one is, is ordered, and I'm just doing the finance paperwork right now. I got that Friday.
And has the third officer started?
The third officer started last week and was here, he's, he's working today, and we're in process, and he's using the remaining two thousand sixteen cruiser for the time being.
Okay.
Alright, so, that's where we are with that.
Okay, so, for people that are, well, we're up to citizen input. For people that are zoomed in or people here, if there's anything we didn't cover that you wanna bring up, could you indicate at this time? Obviously, you guys can just raise your hand.
I have one, I have one question. I would like to ask you guys if you had, if you had a conversation about my request to this section of Killington Road, basically where my office is located, can we have the same setbacks as the rest of the Killington Road, as a business zoning, commercial zoning, business commercial, because Killington Road's...
I think that was your question.
I don't know.
Because the commercial, the business, and everything else is the same. Your, your question was you wanted to be the same as a PUD.
So...
Because if you go into the dimensions, I think that whole road is fifteen feet.
At this time, yes, after the change the select board approved, last one, it's fifteen feet.
So, I just wanna basically, all the setbacks, from the side, from the front, to be consistent.
They're all the same.
Okay, so, it will be consistent?
They're fifteen feet the entire length of Killington Road as it stands right now.
Is the front.
Okay.
And I think there's still twenty-fives on the side.
The sides, I believe, are twenty-five.
Because there was also something, something different in PUD, the numbers...
That's what I just said. You said, you know, the PUD, I think, is still different.
Yeah.
PUD's different because you have greater density.
Correct.
That's why.
Yeah.
Because of greater density, you wanna...
But we haven't had that conversation, because this meeting started off that when we started going into here, I couldn't, because at some point, we're gonna go through all three, there's three different things.
So, my, my suggestion is, because like, I remember Joan Wise was telling me, before Killington Road was like business commercial, and her husband, it took him some time to convince the town to basically grant the business zoning, whatever the business zoning is, is right now with the setbacks and everything else. So, now with Killington Row and then the Killington Road, the whole master plan, I'm looking at that section, and it seems like it's just a little bit confusing, would be easier to eliminate the business zoning and make it commercial from the beginning of Killington Road all the way up.
You're asking for something different now. On one side, you're asking for the setbacks, but then you're asking for the same zoning capability, which up above is nightclubs and some other things, and down by you is not. So, there are, there's more single-family homes in your area, you're not gonna get your area zoned for a nightclub.
How, I don't need it. So, we can exclude that.
But that's what you just asked for.
No, there's...
It has everything else in it.
You, you asked for the same to be zoned as the same as up above, and there's a difference that up above has...
When I printed out the commercial zoning, business zoning, there, there are a few items missing in the business, and one of them is a nightclub, but without it, there's still other, other things, other allowances, other things can be done there.
We have... It's not that one.
I'll go to my screenshots, see if I can...
Two fifteen.
What?
Two one five, section two one five, front page. Eleven?
So, commercial district compared to business district, right? So, in commercial business, the setbacks, the font we changed to fifteen, right? Even in a PUD, we changed it to fifteen, okay? The side setback is fifteen, I'm on page twenty-nine.
Yep.
And, and the side setback in a PUD is fifteen. The rear setback is twenty-five, and in a PUD, it's twenty-five. The maximum coverage is seventy percent in a, in the commercial and then the district, and it goes the same way down, down, down the road, all the ten thousand square foot minimum lots. What you can use, permitted use is whether or not in a PUD, one and two families. In a business district, there's hotel lodging, there isn't, there isn't commercial also, hotel and restaurant.
So, like, auto service, for example? There is in commercial district, but not in business?
What's that?
The, basically, gravel pit, auto service station, light industry, so I just, I'm just looking at, that's still business.
Are you in the business district? So, you're saying, what would you like added into the business district?
It just seems to me that we should eliminate business district and make it the same commercial as the rest of the Killington Road.
So, in the biz, in the commercial districts, not in the PUD, extraction of earth, I don't see anything over at... In, in a business district, there's daycare, there's daycare in commercial.
Yeah, because in commercial district, it shows here in PUD, auto service station, light industry, fast food restaurant, and then if I go to, back to business...
Yeah, and we're not putting gas stations down at the bottom of the road.
It, it's, it's just, seems to be that, when you look at Killington and all those zoning zones, that business here, that business zoning, compared to this zoning, business, commercial business, because Innsbruck is in different zoning, and then commercial there, Killington is one road, so I'm basically...
But the, but the planning commission made certain areas, so if we put, if you think we're gonna put like gas stations allowed now down in the lower part of the Killington Road, there was a certain section that was allowed to have gas stations, and I believe it's really from the mountain merchants, or whether, there's one there, and then there's the hot road, whatever.
I think commercials like Dean Hill rode up, isn't it?
Yeah.
The commercial starts...
Right around there.
I have to look at the map now, I forgot.
What I'm getting at is, is that we're not gonna, if I sit here and start saying there's gas stations...
Look, it's just, on one side, I can kind of see your point, but same time, Killington Road's Killington Road, what's the point of here or there?
What would you like, so let me ask you this question, what would you like to see included?
I would like to have kind of possibilities, same as commercial.
What possibilities do not exist for you right now, short of, and I, nothing to do with me, nightclubs, okay? What exists that you want there that you can't put there? What, what can't you put in there that you wanna do?
It's just, I would like those two things be like identical, basically, that's what I, what I'm...
I don't think you're gonna find the appetite for that, and I'll be honest with you, because a lot of people, there are residential people down here, and you think that you're gonna put a nightclub down in this section.
Or a gas station.
Or a gas station isn't fair to them.
What about the, out, 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 the repair shop?
An outdoor...
You're not gonna, you're not gonna see it. You're not gonna see, if, if, if we were here to put an outdoor repair shop in the lower section, bye-bye.
Because, you know, we, we put in...
What is an outdoor repair shop?
Yeah, we, it's just like, so even, like, I have my, I bought multiple lots, I have the acreage, I can do the whatever.
I'm asking, that's not what I'm asking. What is an outdoor repair shop, for what?
No, it's just basically, I was just reading what's, what's in commercial, what's, what's not.
What is, I'm asking, what is an outdoor repair shop to you? I just don't know. I'm asking.
Outdoor body shop, I don't think that's, that...
We have, the appetite...
It's just options.
The appetite for that, and right now, to have that on the lower part of Killington Road, I would think would be pretty tough, okay?
And remember, that any change to the map, which that is, has to go to the voters. That cannot be changed by the board.
So, even with the land that I bought, with the Killington Row, and I mean, you guys bought this lot and you've decided to put the fire station right in that section, it's just, there was an indication that the town wants to move and make Killington Road, Killington Road, so all the...
The town, it's per, this area is permitted for this.
Right.
We didn't buy a piece of land and then say, let's change the rules.
For me, it's Killington Road's Killington Road, and then it seems like business, that little section seems like you guys are trading slightly differently, because like...
I would argue the other, the opposite is true, because to be perfectly honest with you, if this was forty years ago, and, and the, the gas station that used to be a gas station and repair shop and the other gas station, if they weren't there, I think you'd see this zoning almost all the way up, with the exception of nightclubs. You would, I don't think anybody wanted them up there, they were already there, and they weren't gonna create a non-conformity.
Because we are growing, you know, it's just I wanna have options where I decide to sell the, those lots, and...
I, I, I guess, I guess the problem that I see, Andrew, is, is that you bought a piece of land, and it has zoning for certain things in it. So, if you want to sell it to somebody else, the potential buyer has to stick to, we can't keep on changing because someone, and, and I'm gonna just correct something here, Charlie Wise was not alive, alive, okay, when this property was already zoned something else.
Right.
Okay? And the only reason why it was rechanged was because someone said they had a person that wanted to buy it as a restaurant, not a nightclub, and they had a potential sale for a restaurant, and for some reason, it got changed, okay? We can't continue just to change because somebody wants to sell their piece of property, and it's not zoned for an auto shop. Because it, it almost sounds like you have a person that wants to buy a piece of land from you right now, but they wanna put an auto shop on it. That's what it sounds like. Maybe it's just, you just wanna be able to advertise it as, to put an auto shop, but we already have enough problems with an auto shop up the block that it took me a year now to at least get it looking partially decent, okay? We're not gonna get another auto shop on the Killington Road.
I'm just looking at the option, because like, I will, I can build with the new changes, quarter acre, I mean, I can build lots of houses there. I can build condominiums like I'm doing right now. So, for me, it was just one of those things that I mentioned as, as, in this example, reading through this, saying auto, auto shop or something else.
I think, I think what's allowed in your district will, 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 will do well for you, you know? What people have, I, I hope that they understand is, is that, you know, it's, there's going to be, just because somebody owns forty-five acres of land, say me, okay, doesn't mean that I can, I've gotta go through the river corridor, I gotta go through, I, I gotta go through so many different places, and, and my forty-five acres get shrunk, 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 and then I gotta prove I have water. So, right now, unless this water line comes down here, okay, I don't know if there's enough water, there's a lot of things.
I, I think what really started me thinking about all of this is just the letter from my neighbor that said I cannot, she doesn't like looking at my equipment.
Well, your equipment shouldn't be on that property, because it's not allowed in this all.
But that's, you start driving Killington Road, Chris has lots of equipment, Steve Durkey has lots of equipment, Moguls has lots of equipment. So, my biggest thing is, that's the reason why I started looking into this, basically saying Killington Road's Killington Road. Why I cannot have, and I looked in, in, in the laws, it doesn't say that specifically commercial allows everybody to keep their equipment there, and now they, they're gonna say, oh, you cannot have it at this section of the road. It just, right, it just makes no sense, because like, other people have, and why I can't have it. I just want you guys...
Because it says you're not allowed to have a business there. It doesn't say that you can't have an excavator on your house property, okay, but it says you can't have a business. There's certain businesses in certain areas, like you can't have a gas station down there.
But my business is to, we sell hot tubs, and, and we try to explain that, I need a loader there anyway, not only to push snow, but to unload, but I also, my truck, tri-axle and the trailer, we deliver hot tubs like that. So, all of this equipment is part of the business, Instone Spas, because we deliver them.
Right. So... You're in the middle of a site plan review, and now you wanna take it out into the open, and I'm not gonna take the hook.
Yeah, that, I, that was my explanation of why I was thinking about why business zoning, why business zoning should be eliminated, should be considered.
Andrew, your original, your original text to me that I said, please send to me what you wanted, only talked about the setbacks. And tonight, we've gone from setbacks to I wanna be able to put an auto shop on a piece of property, to I wanna be able to have excavating equipment on a property that's not currently allowed in the area, that's all. I didn't set the zones back then, I wasn't around when it was done, I just have to follow the rules, okay? But there is certain things in here that says no extraction, right?
And not in the PUD extractions of earth materials, which is meaning like a gravel pit.
You know?
That's what that is, so...
But, but also wording doesn't say specifically not allowed to keep equipment, and that's another, I think, key word in, in our laws right now.
Well, I would argue that the, that the one difference I see is they, in the commercial district, it allows light industry, which would be like a small excavating company, and also an auto service station, so those two big differences with what the things are.
So, white service is not allowed down below for certain reasons?
Right.
I know Killington specifically, the resort itself, it's, it's in their zone, and they're allowed to have all their, their equipment.
That's a separate district, that's the ski village.
Yeah, yeah.
That was designed for whatever they're doing in their process. But you don't want all those things allowed in all zones, just because that's where you end up with, not, that, then there's no reason to have zoning. You know what I mean? The whole purpose of zoning is to, to confine certain types of development to certain areas.
That zoning is confusing, because Killington Road is Killington Road, and then suddenly you have, you know, sections, basically, that with the town growing, the way, the way everything was growing, businesses grow, towns grow, suddenly, this business zoning gets eliminated, it becomes commercial, and that's how the town proceeds to...
I think the zoning, but the board, zoning board has looked at this, the commission looked at it, okay, and I think they've made some pretty strong decisions about setbacks and showing some progression with that, okay? But, again, you, in this particular district down here, you have a lot of single-family and duplexes, and just to make a change because you wanna have your equipment, or you want something, is not fair to that entire district. You have to think of the entire district.
I have to do...
You bought the property knowing what it was, okay? You knew what the limitations were. You've actually got a better deal now because you have lesser setbacks, okay? So, it's showing some progression, but regardless, that's how you bought the property, you accepted that. And so, but as these people that live in this district, also, single-family homes or duplexes, it is not fair to all of a sudden allow industry to go in right next to them. That's not what they signed up for. You signed up to buy a piece of property that had limitations.
But same time, that's why every other neighbor I work for, and when I talk about... But same time, that's why every other neighbor I work for, and when I talk about, for example, Steve who owns 30 acres, that can be developed too, so like, when, where I live right now, 308 Killington Road, I already have almost every other person, all I have to do is just like, will you support me on this? And then if, if that comes up to like, for a vote or something, then maybe we should consider it, because then if I get enough people to say, sure, let's change it, let's make it, let's make it.
That would be something you bring to the planning, it's something we decide.
All right.
The planning is the one that presents things to us, as you saw tonight, or did see.
I just don't know how this blew up from make sure that the setbacks are the same up and down the road, and they are. That was the test.
Let's move on.
Yep.
Do you guys have executive session? I do not.
Yes.
Yeah, I got a couple of things, yes.
Executive session...
Oh, before we go, one, one of the, I sent out an email, I don't, I don't have your, I don't have your email.
I'll give it to you before you leave.
Okay. I sent out an email that I would like us as a board to visit all the different departments within the town and tour it with the employees at some point, especially as we're going through, like, walk through the town garage, see what they have going on, walk through, you know, public safety, library, golf course, you're very knowledgeable about the golf course, I'm not. I know the woods, because that's where I put most of the balls, okay? So, it's just like, to me, I think it'd be very interesting to kinda just go through if we could.
Yeah, no, and I was working on, after his email, working on getting it scheduled, so we could do like a, a special meeting before we have, like, each time before we go into one of their departments, we will get to visit the site.
Yep, that'd be great. Thank you, that's all I have, meant to bring up right there.
So, I make a motion to go into executive session for legal and personnel, I believe, right?
Personnel, yeah.
Page 23.